The names, but then it will be hard because of.
So you can talk now, you're unmuted because he wanted you to unmute yourself.
Who did?
Dan, so can you all unmute yourself? I mean, do you have the ability to do this?
Yes.
Hey, Kelsey.
Hi, Tina.
My tech whiz, sorry. She'll be stepping back here.
Right there, she.
And.
Hi there. You didn't see people.
Do it this way, so that you don't get the window behind you.
All right. Is the light behind me causing?
No, it's okay.
The light at the end?
That's how you mute yourself. So you have to mute yourself at all during this. So Tina's on mute right now, so you can't hear her.
I didn't want you to hear me laughing.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Is our board president outdoors?
He's seemingly a board president.
That's just a standstill picture. That's not his.
Oh, there he is.
Well, there he is.
Okay, thanks.
That was, that was his stand up when he's just in place.
Wonder if Robert will use that tripod so we can see his whole fam running through the living room again.
Does that help or not?
No. Does it?
You guys all have American flags when we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
We got a flag back here. There's one on.
Will, I'll look at Josh's flag.
I've got, I've got one on my computer screen.
Kelsey has white, white and blue lamp. Captain America lamp.
I've got a blue and white dress on with this red, red blanket I got going here. I'm close.
So you have Robert today?
Yeah, I talked to him like five minutes ago, 10 minutes ago. He's. Purler beads. Style. My, my niece made it. She makes ties, bow ties out of purler beads because she was trying to get to like a summer dance program. So I bought a bunch from her. I've got like a remote control, Nintendo controller and this. She's sending me some other ones too, so. Figured if it sits on my desk, I might as well wear it, right?
Yeah, that's great. Impression. Hi, Josh. I haven't seen you in a long time.
I know, Dick.
Good to see you.
We've got lots to talk about, don't we?
Yes, we do. We've got a meeting coming up this month, so we got to figure it out.
I have somehow managed to miss, I think, the last three meetings, so.
Don't feel bad, Tina's too. Maybe the last two.
I will, I will eventually roll in there. Well, no, it was like spring break and then there was a thing and pandemic.
It's a thing.
Reasons.
Hi there, Brady. Hello.
Brady, we missed you.
Yeah, no, this is crazy. It was weird not going to a board meeting, even though there was, and just sitting at home. First time in two years.
So you've already been on a bunch of Zoom meetings today, huh, Brady? How's class going?
I had one Zoom meeting today and then I had two yesterday. It's kind of, it's not, it's all over at the same time, but also still really not because the teachers are really good at communicating times and everything and it's nice.
Dave, did you turn when Kelsey told you not to turn? When you sit back with the window behind you, we can't.
It's dark, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's what my daughter told me to do, right?
That's right. Your, your tech support advised that you stay away from the window.
Worse or better? I don't know.
Dan, hi, Dan. What do I do to get the volume up a little bit?
On your computer, you can, just your volume controls. It's, I don't know, you know, in Windows, it's down at the bottom, a little speaker.
Yeah, up top, okay.
Or I think it's on the bottom.
We got it. Thanks.
Okay, I think I have to mute everybody and then selectively unmute those of you who are on the board. And that way, if anyone else joins, they will be muted. So I'll, I'll do that right now. There we go. And unmute.
So I don't have to worry about that.
No, so you should all be able to still talk and.
You're going to control.
Yeah, and it's added a participant. Yeah, perfect. Okay.
Josh, do you have others in the room with you?
I do.
Oh, good.
Melanie Marshall and Karen.
The gang's all here.
All six feet, feet apart.
They're in corn. Visual conversation, confirmation that.
Let's sit to our length. I have 10 seconds. I don't see Robert, but we'll go ahead and get going. Okay, so I will call the 18th, April 15th regular board meeting to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Funny, I could hear every, I could hear you, Dave, like a second or two behind me. All right, so roll call. I don't think we have Director Butler yet. But other than that, we have Director Green, Director Beach, Director Panagis, Superintendent Dr. Middleton, Brady, as, yeah. And no, oh, there's Robert. Hey, Robert, can you hear us? Maybe hearing a little bit. We're going to just say that we have Director Butler with us.
There he is.
Let's go to item 2A, Board Comments. Director Beach, do you want to start?
I didn't prepare any.
Oh. I probably shouldn't have started with you. I forgot. You like to go laugh.
That's okay.
Want me to come back to you?
Um, yeah, just give me two seconds to put my thoughts together. I was looking at the agenda. You can go ahead to somebody else.
Director Panagis, how about you? Where'd you go? Disappeared. All right. Go away, Director Butler. How about you?
Uh, I'm going to go with brevity tonight, just in the loop of day I've had, so I'm good.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Director Green?
Oh, I'd just like to thank the people that are helping us through these tough times with the technology, with the Zoom, with Dan and his team and also teachers that I know have been stepping up and helping other teachers and the kids try to get through this. There's been a lot of different issues, but best be expected with what's going on. We'll, we'll get through it. So I just want to comment there, thankful for those that are working with our kids with the technology and our teachers. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you so much, Director Green. Um, I guess I'll circle back to you, Director Beach, if that's okay.
Sure. I, I kind of wanted to second what Dave was just saying. I went and checked out Chromebooks and it, I mean, though, you know, we were all there. I mean, the process was as quick as it could be and, you know, my kids have their Chromebooks. They've been able to have meetings with their teachers. They're happy to see their friends. I know all the students are happy to see friends and, and be able to get back to work. So appreciate that and I appreciate the bus drivers and those that are working with the lunches, even if that isn't their normal job description, that everybody is, you know, contributing and jumping in to, to help and to really make that process as smooth as it can be. And the packets, my kids have gotten their packets and, and the work is getting done. So thank you to all the folks that are really hands on doing that work every day.
Thank you so much, Director Beach. Brady? You're on mute. Oh, Dan, you have to unmute Brady.
Brady frozen?
I mean, there's not a lot to say because obviously we're not in school, but I know yearbook staff is still working, so there'll still be a yearbook at the end of the year, which is pretty cool. Dan helped us set up some computers for that, which is awesome. And then, I mean, I think Zoom classes, as far as like teachers making sure students know about them have been really well, really good about Canvas and remind notifications. And then I know the senior class officers and Mr. Davis have had some good conversations about possibly still doing some of version of our senior events, which has been really great at the same time. Okay, that's it.
Okay. Got it.
Director Panagis, you're back.
Yeah, I don't know why I went where, anyway. Sorry about that.
No worries. Perfect timing. Board comments? Any comments?
Yes, I remember that. Yes. A good news comment I just heard this afternoon is that the community coalition is very, very happy about the efforts of the school district in making things happen with the food bank and other resources and working together. And so they, they'll hear more, but, and you guys already, already know it, but really need that working hard and working well together. And my comment that I was going to make before, even though I haven't seen him for a while, I really want to let Dr. M know. I've been thinking, we've had time to reflect. And this time in a year, a year ago, many things were different. And this is horrible what we're going through, but last year there was another big thing on our agenda and that was changing the leadership in the district. And I hear so much from teachers, people in the community. It always comes out, I think Carl mentioned a little bit, the, the last meeting, but the, the way I've, I've read everything you've, you've been sending out, your communications, starting with positive, looking for positive whenever possible, and also saying what needs to be done and making sure everybody understands what's going on. And I've worked in this business a long time and it's just a totally different situation than what we had before. And it means so much when people have their own stress, which is huge, and then trying to do things, you know, with the district. And I've been through lots of administrative things and to see it turn like this. And so I just want to thank you, Josh, and I'm really, really happy we made the decision we did a year ago. That's all.
Thanks, Dr. Pete.
Yeah, and I certainly want to echo those comments, Director Panagis. I, Dr. M, a huge shout out to your leadership and not only that, but your team, your admin team. I mean, you guys are doing something on the fly that we've never done before. And I, I was, I was laying in bed last night talking to my wife and she was like, what a first year for you. I mean, I said it before, I was ready to get. But what a great job, I mean, that you guys are doing. Every time I've called Dr. Evans and said, hey, you know, I, what about this or what about that? He's, oh yeah, we thought about that. We're, we're doing this or whatever. I've, I've actually felt like I've, I've been more of a pester to you, so I've, I've tried to step away because I felt like my, my calls and texts were, were bugging you in a good way, not in a bad, and just, you know, you, you've obviously already thought through it. You've got a great team. A huge shout out to the lunch ladies, the bus drivers. I mean, everybody just put in a lot of, of just really hard work and I'm sure even more than I can even imagine. So I, I'm just really appreciative. I mean, it's a super sad year. I'm, I'm hoping, praying that in some way we get a way to celebrate our seniors in a meaningful, powerful way. I mean, they've already messed up so much, Brady, I can barely look at you without feeling emotional, man. It's, it just breaks my heart. So, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we get the lights turned back on, so to speak, in a way that we can celebrate you guys in the way that you deserve after giving up so much of your senior year. But anyway, I, I just, please let everybody know, Doctor, I'm just how appreciative the whole board is, obviously, on, on all of the hard work that they've done, so.
Absolutely.
All right. Moving on, item 3A, Business Report Prepared by Marshall. Do we want to start with fiscal? Since it's prepared by, do we have any specific questions for Marshall? I'm, I'm working the three screens here, so let me get to the fiscal report on this screen. Excuse my dog's barking in the background. Well, Matt, I'm guessing that, that shadow is you, right, Marshall?
Yeah, there's a bit of a light in the background. Let me, it's me, but.
He has a bit more hair than I do.
Do we have any fiscal questions, Board? I'll start off the discussion with just, go ahead. I was just going to say, so I, I appreciate the update that you sent us via Dr. Dr. M. Marshall on kind of our expenses and stuff like that. I, I guess my overall question, and I asked it in an email and you don't, definitely don't have to answer it now, but I'm just trying to get some understanding of, of what our burn rate is. Like, are we spending what we would normally spend a month, you know, starting in March? Obviously, those, that financial is not provided for us yet. Are we spending less? Is it hugely less? I know it should be less, obviously intelligently or, or just intuitively, it feels, obviously, we should be spending less, but, you know, you look at our financials and it's, it's, it's painful. So I'm just trying to see, okay, we're, we're climbing back up the mountain approximately so many thousands of dollars every month, you know, so there's better, much better days ahead. Because obviously, when you combine that with a very big question mark as far as funding for next year, I, I'm just trying to figure out how much worry should we have?
I, I think you should be worried. I think we're, we're, we'll do better than what we would have done through June, but we're getting the comments from the state that, you know, their, their fiscal year ends in June. So when they talk about our funding continuing throughout the year, they kind of hedge a little bit on what will happen after June. So we have two more months of our school year after June. You have July and August still. That, those two months fall in the state's next year's fiscal year. So they are hedging a little bit about what will happen in July and August. The talk of perhaps needing to either borrow or keep some of our transportation allocation in June to balance their budget has been thrown out. They haven't talked about how much that will be or if they would be able to repay it or not. If funding continues for the rest of the year, we will, our, our spending will be less than it would have been had we been in school, simply because we're probably saving about $20,000 a month in transportation. We're really holding people to not working any extra hours, which we tend to have, you know, maybe $100,000 of extra hours for the rest of the year. We're spending a little more money on food because we're buying prepackaged items to distribute better, but we are, are also feeding more kids than we were when we were in school. So that's probably a wash. So ideally, we're, and the things that we can control are trending better, but there's, there are big unknown of what's going to happen after June.
So I guess we can't end the year with a negative fund balance, right?
Correct.
If I'm wrong.
That's correct.
So I, I read your third bullet point, general fund balance of $400,000 to $50,000 is at risk. And obviously, I, the answer is how much it risks. And I know that you can't answer that and by no means am I asking that question, but we, we need to come up with a plan of some sort. We need to take some sort of, and I don't know what that looks like, but we have to take some monicum of control so that we, if, if, if they hold transportation and, and we don't think we can hit that fund balance, how we're going to end the year. To crap that plan. I'm just, have you guys gone down that road in that discussion?
Right, we've, we've talked through a lot of options. Talked about if we need to, we could borrow short term. It's really the, so we get our property tax revenue in October. So if there were a problem, it would be a very, very short term problem, provided that the, the state funds us completely next year. And that's, that's a whole nother topic to talk about because there, you know, with the McCleary ruling, they, the guidance we're getting is it's going to be pretty hard for them to do anything to cut basic ed funding. What, but there's other funding that's provided that goes beyond basic ed, like transportation, like healthcare costs, like the, the SEB allocation, those kinds of things that they could play with. And we're, we're definitely getting, getting comments from the state that our, our funding will probably be, be less than we expect next year. How less? How far less? We, we don't know yet. But we do have our big property taxes coming in October, so if we needed to do anything, it would be maybe, you know, a one month, two month bridge type thing. But I, I, I don't think that it is at risk of going negative, though. I think it's just at risk of not hitting 450. I think probably 200 is more reasonable, 250. I, I don't, I just don't, I think that there's so many unknowns that 450 is a risky prediction right now.
So would it be appropriate, and, and I guess I'm asking this more to Dr. M, and you guys don't have to switch places, but Doctor, would it be appropriate for us, I mean, I, I guess my gut tells me plan for the worst, hope for the best. So would it be appropriate to have a plan that's presented to the board? All right, so if we do end up negative, here's how we would address that. And just so that we can wrap our heads around that and understand that now, and, and then we've got a plan if we get to that point, and, and we also can then hope that we do end up in the 200s, as Marshall says.
I, I do. I think, you know, each day, there seems to be new guidance from the state. And really, what I could see happening is between Marshall and myself and, and the team, we'll probably come back and present a couple of possible scenarios to you. And I'll just give an example. Some of the talk has been some sort of staggered funding. Now, this is just a possibility. And so they're looking at districts with lower fund balances as possibly getting more than districts that have a war chest that's, that's built up. That's, that's one scenario that's been talked about. So I think for us, it would be wise to come back again, I would say, two to three weeks and present a few different scenarios for you.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, for me, that's how I battle bad information. It's like, okay, all right, well, tell me how we're going to get through this. And I just, that would be helpful for me. I don't want, I'm not speaking, obviously, for the board. I'd love to hear inputs from, from the rest, but I, I just, I mean, so I, I manage a territory in Alaska and they're going to come up short and it's like, okay, well, what's your plan? You know, it's not for me to write the plan. You tell me. Here's what, you know, here's your, your outs, here's your ends. How are we going to balance the two of things? So I just don't want to be having this conversation in late July, right? Where it's like, all of a sudden, we've got to do something quickly that no one's prepared to do and we're all just kind of staring at each other. And then, you know, the, it's always been my experience, the longer you wait, the, the less decisions or opportunities you have. So. But what do you guys think? And I don't want to bogart the conversation.
Well, I, I think that's a great idea. As I, actually, you kind of hit on exactly the questions that I had. So I think just coming up with maybe scenarios or what are our options for maybe our next board meeting, if possible, you know, if that's doable. Just kind of keeping our eye on that ball the best we can so that we can keep everybody informed.
Yeah.
Sounds prudent.
Marshall, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Can you talk to me about the, the misappropriation from the state on our? I was trying to find, where's that bullet point? I just completely.
That was the, that was the tipper problem from last year. So they, they collected the money from us again in January of this year and they said they would pay it back in February. And I just wanted to point out that they actually did pay the money back.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Okay, there it is. Yeah, I'm sorry. It somehow got to the wrong page. Okay. So we did get the, the payment back for that, then.
I guess the other, the other kind of point to make about, one more point to make about our funding for the rest of the year, they've kind of frozen our. They've kind of frozen our enrollment with our February count, and they're using that count as what our apportionment will be based on for the rest of the year. So no matter what happens to our enrollment the rest of the year, we're kind of frozen at where we are right now. And that's, they did that for all the districts.
So special education is always, I mean, we're always having the conversation is always is running higher than what we expected. And I get that that's, that's, I'm not saying that in a negative connotation. I know that that's kind of the reality of that. Why are we trending significantly higher, though? Is it just due to the enrollment? Is it due to the special things we're having to do with the shutdown? Is there anything that we're doing to try to rein that back in?
There, a piece of it is the E cap is twice as, we have about twice as much enrollment in E cap, so we're getting more, we're getting twice as much funding to offset that, though. So our funding is also up, but we are very much dependent on safety net and community impact to offset the increased expenditures. And I think we're asking for a million dollars in safety net this year, and we don't know how much community impact we have. So we're gonna be up three or $400,000 in our requests for backfilling money revenue from the state to offset that. And that, that's, so that'll, if, if they, the state and the federal government come through with that funding, it'll do a lot to offset the increased costs.
Okay, which will obviously also go to help offset that fund balance that we're gonna, that we're struggling with.
Right, but that's, you know, that's a piece. But you still kind of never know what kind of mood the committee is gonna be in when they look them over.
Board, any other questions? I have one other one. It was a variation in the email that we got from Dr. M. as it relates to next year and your... So, yeah, here it is. So next year, you said increased property tax revenue, 1.2 additional revenue due to legislative changes. And then you say 2019 levy revenue remaining flat. So I guess that's this school year, not next school year. Okay.
Right.
I answered my own question. Okay. Any other questions related to fiscal? All right, let's move on. Let's just do enrollment real quick, because I'm sure that's an easy conversation. So it's, you said that's frozen based on February, so it's 2070, 25?
Yes. They will...
Or actually, 2055.
They, I don't have it in here. Let's see. Yeah, 2055 is what it's frozen at. They will apply a factor based on previous year's trends of what our enrollment does the last half of the year, if it goes up or down. But like last, last year, we stayed pretty flat in the year, so it'll probably stay pretty flat. And they haven't, they haven't given us guidance on how they will do that trend yet. But if it's comparing it to last year's trend, we stayed pretty flat in the year.
Okay. Any other questions on enrollment, Board? Okay, but let's jump into operation. So it looks like we had our yearly assessment that was included in the board report on all of the buildings. I guess we hit the high points on buildings that you have specific concerns on, Marshall?
I say high, high points is we've done a lot this year to fix the leaks in the roofs, and those are represented in the, in the report. So we've had roofers out and have, have done some pretty good patching on the roofs. Our biggest piece of concern right now is probably classroom space at Mountain Way. There's, the portables there are in pretty bad shape, but we're kind of holding off a little bit on that, on, on making those repairs to see what will happen, what the state's guidance is gonna be about funding for next year. One of the things they could say is, yeah, we're gonna reduce your funding by so much, but we're going to relax the K3 compliance. And if that's the case, then maybe we wouldn't have to move out into those portable, so why spend the money on them yet? Okay.
Questions, Board?
Have they given you any timeframe on when you're gonna find out any updates, information?
So it's my understanding that they would have to have a special session in order to do anything with our funding. They're kind of identifying the June revenue report that comes out, which is a quarterly revenue report. That'll really update their forecasting for what their revenue shortfall, I think, will be. So I wouldn't expect us to really know anything until June at the earliest. And it's gonna be, as, as a result, we're holding a lot of positions open that we're just not gonna fill until we have more information for next year.
Any other questions? This report year, this, we fill that out internally. We don't hire a company to do this, correct?
Every fifth or sixth year, we have to have an outside vendor come in and do it. We're on the cycle right now where it's just us that does it for, I think, two more years.
So is there, is there something in here, overall, all the reports, I guess, were, I mean, pretty middle of the road. Is there something I'm missing in here as, as, that's a sleeping tiger? That's really, we need to be very cognitive about this year, next year, to get replaced? I hear you saying that the ceilings aren't leaking anymore. That's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, boilers are getting pretty old. The portables at Mountain Way are something we're gonna need to look at if we have, if our enrollment comes in where we think it is. And we have to still keep that K3 class size compliance. Other than that, we can push through another year and probably be okay.
Yeah, because overall, I'm, I'm just looking at the last page being, we're in a... We keep, we have a lot of conversations about deferred maintenance, and I know that we definitely have. But overall, the, the assessments are fairly good. I mean, do you agree with that sentiment, or am I missing something?
I agree with that. I think, I think, you know, the high school, some of the facilities at the high school are gonna need some work, but those are beyond our capacity to really fund without doing something bigger, you know, like resurfacing the track, doing new siding for the high school, stuff like that is probably not something we can tackle easily right now. So, you know, the high school and that is in pretty good shape. The roof leaks have been fixed. The middle school's in pretty good shape. It could use some stucco repair. The HVAC systems are getting kind of old. They could probably use some major tune-ups in all the facilities. But, you know, I mean, there's nothing that's, I don't think, the most pressing thing would be if we need to, if we need to have additional classrooms at Mountain Way. That'd be our, probably our top priority. Once we understand what that's gonna be, our top priority would be extra classrooms at Mountain Way.
Okay. All right, anything else? Thank you, Marshall. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Moving on, the 3B superintendent report. Dr. M.?
What I thought I would do is hit some of the highlights from the state superintendent, like I did at our last meeting. And I know I've shared a number of these things with you, but I'll just do an update on those. And so, of course, meals were a top priority, and I'd share again how quickly we were able to mobilize. And just hats off to the food service department for making that happen so quickly. I've sent you graphs a couple of times, and you've seen that jump dramatically. And on a, on a daily basis now, we're in the 8 to 860 range. On packet day, last Thursday, of course, we broke 1,000, and I anticipated that would happen again tomorrow. And as Marshall said, we're, we're serving more meals now than we do during the school year or during, when we're in session. So it's a great, great benefit, I think, for the community that we can do this. And again, really great job by the food service and, and our transportation department for taking them out. And just all the staff, food service, as well as our paras and other staff members who are over there assisting. Unlike you, Carl, when I, when I saw Brady on the screen today, it just really shows how much we miss our students. And our seniors, we certainly have sort of a tender heart for them because of, it's, they didn't ask for this. And it's a, it's a senior year like, like no other. And I know that both Mr. Davis and Mr. Johnson and Ms. McVeigh are, are talking about how to make that graduation special. I will say that on a Snohomish County superintendent call yesterday, no districts have committed to how they're going to do their graduation at this point. I, I think in probably within 10 to two weeks, I think we'll probably make a decision because, you know, the likelihood of this being lifted and having an in-person graduation is, is not looking very good. So I anticipate they will be working with their seniors and their parents and coming up with a plan on, on what that virtual graduation will look like and find a way to really celebrate them. In the meantime, seniors and those students that were in college and the high school and AP, they were the first ones to get the laptops and have that true new instruction. And so that's been going on a little bit longer. And, you know, there, there are certainly hiccups along the way, but those are, those are handled on a daily basis, and we continue to work out some of those, those wrinkles. In terms of the third item, which is learning opportunities for all, we've certainly seen a shift from our board meeting three weeks ago, when the emphasis was really on review and refresh for K11. It was just sort of maintain those skills, keep sharp. But obviously, with the closure through the rest of the school year, we've had to pivot and now look at new learning. Six through 11 have made that shift, and I, I need to really recognize our, our tech department and the folks over there who've been assisting them and rolling out those laptops to six through, six through 12, but six through 11 for that new learning. And there's a pretty strong plan on that and what that's, that looks like in terms of the schedule during the week and when teachers are checking in with their students, when they're doing maybe a video lesson, whether it's live or recorded, and just getting the work out. And of course, we're still doing packets for those who are not on the internet or don't have, have a device or have that capability. But I want to share, along with the learning opportunities, that Carl and I had a meeting earlier this year, I want to say before the holiday break, with a foundation out of Seattle. And we were really looking at opportunities for 2021 on how they could assist. We did reach out to them and shared that one of our biggest needs were hotspots for those families that don't have internet, for whatever reason. And Dan has worked really hard to secure some hotspots. And our goal was to get 100 of them, which costs $26,000. And Foundry10, when I visited with them the other day, they said, we would like to help you with that. And so they are sending us a check for $26,000 to cover the expense, expense of those hotspots and are looking forward to other opportunities next year. So that was a real win. Waiting for, I think, the SIM cards, and then we'll have a very deliberate rollout of that for those families that, that need those hotspots. In the meantime, we still have our parking lots open and have moved the Wi-Fi devices closer to the windows so that there can be access for those students or families that want to come and access resources that way. And of course, the last priority was, you know, just keeping our staff engaged and at work. And our staff, I appreciate the comments that you shared with me early, earlier, but it is a team effort, and there's a great team here. We have a number of them online with Jennifer and Sarah or here in the room, and that's been a great team to work with. And it goes all the way to our buildings, to our transportation, to our food service, to our technology, our principals, our teachers, our paras. They're just unbelievable. And really, for us to make this switch as quickly as we have, I think, says a lot about them. And it really comes down to a comment I met, I, I said a couple minutes ago. We just miss the students, and it's just so foreign for, for any of us. And regardless of the position, whether you're serving food or whether you're sitting in my seat or, or our day-to-day, day in, day out, teachers and paras and principals, we just miss students. And so there's a real dedication for them to make this work, hoping that it does not go into next year. But honestly, the state superintendent has told us a number of times to keep ratcheting things up in our delivery and our expectations, hoping that it ends when the school year ends on June 19th, but preparing for the possibility that it could go into the fall. So that's, that's the message we have been getting out to, to our staff that hope it's short-term, but it could, it could go into 2021 as well. And then I guess, really, I just want to thank our families and, and students because they didn't sign up for this either. They want to send their kids to our school, and we want to do the best and we can and honor that. And it's just a set of circumstances that no one has, no one could anticipate. And so their, their patience has been greatly appreciated as we've had to make a couple of milestones from how long is this going to last to some basic resources, and now to becoming much more sophisticated in our delivery of new learning for our students. I think the last thing I wanted to share, Marshall has already covered that. The state superintendent yesterday, again, no specifics, but he just said, be prepared. It's gonna be, it'll be a hard year financially. So we heard that loud and clear the number of times you've said it. So we will, I like what Director Veach had to say. We will come back to you at our next board meeting and have some scenarios laid out for you.
Any questions for the superintendent report, Board? I, I know I'll say, that's, that's huge. I'm so thankful to Foundry10 for, for helping us out in that. I mean, it's, I mean, what an amazing thing, with great timing, too. I mean, we, I know, we had several conversations, met with them, and I know we, uh-oh. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, my Wi-Fi dropped out, so I guess I'm just talking on the phone. But anyway, I'm really appreciative of Foundry10, and thanks for reaching out to him also, Dr. M. Any other questions? I guess Director Veach has a question. Director Veach, are you unmuted? I can't, I'm waiting for my Wi-Fi. I'm waiting for my Wi-Fi to come back up, so I can't see you.
Dan, can you un-
Yay, I'm unmuted. I was trying to get somebody's attention to unmute me. So I just had a quick question. Josh, I sent you the email, but I, I don't think enough time maybe has passed. I had the thought, I'm just, this is more for the information of the board as well. I had the thought on Monday that the lunch delivery is between 11 and 1, but the schools have either a third period or sixth period from 11 to 12, which sort of Monday through Thursday could possibly cause a student to miss the lunch delivery, maybe from 11 to 12:15, but I don't know if, what an impact of that was. It was just sort of a question that I sent out. And I don't know if enough time has really passed to see if there's an impact on that, but.
That was a great question and a good catch on your part. We have talked about it here. I can say that Melanie has fielded one call, one call, and the advice we told that parent was go get lunch and, you know, just let your, your teacher know. So I don't know if it's impacted a, a lot of students, but we're going to look at that and maybe, maybe make some adjustments on that. But that was a, like I said, that was a great catch on your part. Thank you.
Well, and I know that at the elementary level, my kids that are at Monte Cristo were, are having Zoom calls at 11 AM as well. So it made me think that, you know, it might impact even down at the lower. I know that middle school, high school is scheduled. I don't know what the elementary schedule is, but just wanted to put that out there so that the other board members knew that it was in the works. That's all. Carl, did we lose you again? Are you there?
No, I'm here. I'm just getting my video going again.
There you are.
Any other question for superintendent report? I see you're paused, you're muted. Director Butler, are you okay? Okay, perfect. Is there, I guess, just before we go on the, the next thing, Dr. M, is there anything that we can do as a board to support? I mean, I feel like everybody's working their butt off and I, I feel like I'm standing twiddling my thumbs, not putting in the hard work. Is there anything that we could do better to support you guys or?
I think something that you and I talked about maybe a week ago and now a week has gone by and just there's been so many other things, but at some point it would be, I think, really great to get the, the directors to create some sort of message to our seniors in particular and maybe to the entire community. And that's something I know Melanie and I can work on, but just some sort of message that we can post and just sort of a hang in there type of thing.
Yeah. Have there, I guess that just comes to mind, the question is there, what, what would be the trigger for you to, I mean, for us to try to set up some sort of last minute graduation celebration? I mean, if, if the, you know, is there a date where it's just not feasible anymore? Like if we got released, full released in July, could we still do something last minute? Is there a date or kind of a cliff where it just becomes no longer feasible? Or, you know, I guess, what, what would happen? I guess, short of the governor saying, we're open, go back to whatever you were doing, that would allow you to be able to do that.
I think what I would do is ask our high school principals to survey their students, their seniors and parents to talk about that because you get too far into summer and it's, it's less maybe less available for some, whereas if we do something virtual, that'll be something in the now and while, while students are really still in session. So I think I would ask them to do some work with their parents and seniors.
Is there, has there been any discussion about maybe next year's part of graduation? I mean, I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but somehow recognizing the previous year grad seniors if we don't. I mean, I don't even know what that looks like because you figure at that point they're freshmen, graduated freshmen from college. But I, I mean, I, I just, like I said, I look at Brady, I mean, the seniors, they deserve something. I, I don't know what something looks like, but I just feel passionate. They deserve something. They deserve their celebration.
Yeah, I think at this point, they continue to get different ideas from, I mean, you're hearing all sorts of ideas across the country on what's going to happen. I know that Justin's and another company are offering some services for free that they would bring in a big national name keynote speaker and create a, you know, sort of exciting virtual ceremony, but nothing replaces, I mean, nothing replaces the live interaction between teacher and student. Nothing replaces a, a true graduation. So I would say, give me a little bit of time. I'll work with our principals and see what they can solicit some input from their, their stakeholders.
And I just, I don't know if you've done this specific to the senior parents and stuff, but you know, I don't know if there's a way of saying, listen, if we got released by, you know, July 4th, we'll still have some sort of graduation. So just keep that in mind, but you know, after July 5th, we can't, you know, it's challenging. I don't know if that's possible or even what that date would be, but because I'm looking at the discussion boards and all that, there's obviously still a lot of conversation along graduation and, and stuff like that also. So and our community is asking that question. Anything else before we move on to board reports?
Yes, I'd like to.
Go ahead, Dr.
I felt the same frustration about the seniors for sure, but go back a little bit. That we're just kind of standing, people are doing all kinds of great things and we're just kind of watching it. What are our options on being more, being supportive and visible? And like, can we help with the lunches, the delivery or the loading? Or are there, is there anything that we can, you know, make a difference just to the kids who will at least see us doing some good stuff?
Right. Well, I, I think there's, there are always some options, you know, for that sort of thing. We are trying to keep our staff busy and, you know, staff members, they're doing different jobs and that, what they're typically doing. But we're also trying to remember that, you know, this being a health crisis, if we don't need people here, we, we want them to stay home. And so I, I appreciate the, the offer. I, I do need to always default back to safety for, really for all of us too.
Yeah, I understand. Good, yeah.
Well, I think the message that you walk away to, Dr. M, is if, if there's something we can do virtual or anything with this, we want to, we want to be part of all of the hard work that's going on. So, you know, let us know.
I think the other thing, I guess I forgot to mention, I, I texted, I saw a thing that several schools in the state of Washington are turning on the stadium lights on Friday evening at 20 after eight, 2020 to honor the seniors and I had, I saw that forwarded it to Josh and Carl and I, it sounds like that's a go. Is that going to be a thing, Josh?
That, that is, we are, we are going to turn on the lights at that, that time. We also have been advised by Washington State Patrol that they, they do not want a big parade. I know in my former state, that was a big event and it was, is successful, but you know, we want to honor the, the guidance that we're getting from the state level too. So we won't be having a parade. We will have our lights on just in, you know, in, in honor of those seniors and those senior athletes on, on Friday at that time. And we'll certainly get the word out of what and why.
Right, okay.
Hey, Dan, can you unmute Director Butler, please? Not yet. I still see the mute button by your name.
Just a thought on that, maybe a way to encourage people to not be driving around so much. Could we turn on the lights at at the crossroads at the, at the field there too as well? I mean, that's a high school. Maybe honor them in two different locations. That would discourage people from seeing a new school. Just a thought.
I like that.
Great idea. Anything else before we move on to board reports? Did you have anything, Brady? I see you're on mute. No, okay, it's okay. All right, let's move on. Let's start with ledge report. I know, I guess you said you had some stuff to share.
Okay. Yeah, and just let you know what's been done and what's out there. I did send an email that included this final, not the final, but the legislative report on March 20th. Did you get that in your email? The board. And a couple of things I wanted to point out, the person, the writing it up said, we're committed to providing you with information that is pertinent to planning for the future. As you're looking at COVID-19, we are working on an in-depth end of session summary to share with you in the future. There's a lot, lot going on in there, the same, the same boat, but on the, the next page. And to get to that, I think you have to go to WSA and it's easy to find the legislative subcommittee and all of that, all of this on the second page and it's divided into staff, facilities, funding and allocations, governance and budgets. But if you do, if you have that and you press the words blue there, it will open it up and give you the details of what's happening, what is happening with each individual bill. So I, I thought this was an easy way if something catches your interest to, to look at it that way. So, and the third, there's, there's, the page on session review, they do that one in black on the COVID. So it just shows how, how much it has affected everybody, including the legislature. Any questions? And then there's numbers of the specific staff on the last page, but this is more, this is a tool to, and I will let you know and I'll be looking for it if they do have a detailed report later in, you know, in the summer. That's all I have.
Any questions about the ledge report? I've got one if no one else does. Dr. M, have you, have you seen the recent model based, model policies from WSA as it relates to awarding competency master base credits for high school graduation?
Yes, that did come out. We saw something like that yesterday and it was discussed a little bit yesterday at the, by the state superintendent. I haven't, honestly, I haven't read it deeply, but I have it in my inbox.
Okay, that's fine. But the paragraph that struck me is that the districts that do not already have offers, like offer action policies in place are encouraged to adopt any or all of these policies to maximize the opportunity to award students with credits that meet high school graduation requirements despite the COVID-19 outbreak. So, and there's, there's policies for ELA, math, science, social sciences, art, health and fitness, and integrated environmental sustainability education. It looks like it's something that we next board meeting, if it makes sense, need to adopt fairly quickly, which gives then you guys the flexibility to award those credits. I just don't want to be behind the eight ball. So you and I could talk about that offline, but I was just wondering if that's something you'd, you'd seen yet as related to the report. Okay, any, any other questions on the ledge report? Okay, WIA, is there anything? Oh, Director Green's paused, is muted. I, I saw the head shake now, so I don't believe that there's, there's anything. Correct, Director Green? Okay, I figured that. And Dan, if you can unpause, unmute Director Green, that'd be great. Read your report.
I think.
I see you're unmuted, Robert.
I have nothing for WIA.
I think everything is the community report right now, isn't it? I don't have anything specifically to report, but it's pretty much all the things. So I appreciate all of us, you know, each kind of contributing to the community report for each of our meetings.
One thing I appreciate that you do, Team Director Veach, sorry, I should call you by your formal name, is when you forward things that you see via Facebook or idea for like the school lights and stuff like that. I mean, I, I hadn't seen that. I know Dr. M had already had seen it and stuff, but it's, I appreciate all of that. I think you do a really good job of that. So thank you. All right. Any questions or anything else with any reports? All right. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. Consent agenda, is there any additions to the consent agenda, Dr. M?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Is there any mottications needed to the consent agenda provided in the amendments or in the agenda package, sorry? I've seen anyone nodding their heads. Okay, so then it passes by unanimous consent. And I guess we're done at 6:56. It's weird, but appreciate all of you guys. We're, we'll have the next meeting via Zoom meeting also. So I guess with that, sign off. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It can be outside the meeting. What happens? My favorite activity, signing my name lots and lots at the end of a meeting. Melanie has the answer.
That's a really good question.
I mean, are we doing computer signatures and?
No, we're, we're going to save that for a future date when we're all back and do lots of signing.
We'll just, I'll order my stamp now. Or I need to get a messy signature. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye.